All right. I will call to order this regular city council meeting Thursday, November thirteenth, twenty twenty-five at six P M. Stand for the bunch of allegiance. I am glad I believe you go to the United States of America and in your republic for which it stands. One nation under God, in whose soul we live, your tea and justice for all.
I must have printed the.
All right, moving to roll call, we'll start down with councillor Ward.
Ralph Ward, here.
Elaine Armstrong, Nikki Wood.
Paul Miller.
And councillor Harden and councillor Pointer absent, and then we have our vacant seat. All right, we'll move into item number four, changes to the agenda. Um, I'm just gonna add one thing to the agenda um after. Everything was put out, we got two fund requests for donations from this uh requested by the city for. From the Lakeside Fire Association and the Lakeside Mines Club. I'll add that on to number twenty-four. Under new business.
Emma, I have to remove October twenty-third minutes. I didn't get those.
Okay, and we know October twenty-third special meeting minutes.
And the other one too.
Twenty-six. Motion?
No, there's um, there was one at three o'clock and one at six o'clock on the twenty-third. And I didn't get to those.
Okay, was it removed? And definitely address the minutes in the vision. Yeah, we'll get that.
Yeah, I just wanted to pour changes for the.
All right. Um, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
All right, councillor Ward has made a motion to approve the agenda, and it's been seconded by councillor Miller. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Post. Well, I forgot we were doing it the new way.
That's okay for that one.
All habits, yeah. All right, motion carries, agenda is approved. We'll move into item number six, um, our minutes. I think there's uh some changes we can just run through individually.
You, you know, I don't even think on that one you have to, because I must have printed the wrong. Version, because I know I had, I know, and I know, because the other one's perfect. One of them, so the other one.
Well, you know the changes.
Yeah, on the the work session one.
Yeah.
It's like, what?
So. I guess that's wrong, the word.
Could be, yeah, yeah, I um, no, I did, yeah, I know I did them, but. And I printed the long ones.
We'll start uh with the July tenth minutes. I think this wasn't the biggest, I had a big one just like this in my. For testing, so.
Well, we had one for two o'clock.
This is the six o'clock.
Yeah.
Yeah, but last month we re- uh approved it at two o'clock. And then this one was done prior, but we can do it.
Oh, okay, cuz I didn't, I couldn't find the July tenth, so I um. But I saw the second or the the two o'clock one, so I just went ahead and did this one again. Or I may have just made a copy of it, I don't know, I can't remember.
It's exactly like the other one.
Okay.
Just made a copy of.
Okay.
Okay. October ninth, why not do? Or there's one more. Well, the six o'clock one. That's the one that's.
The one that's.
Oh, sorry, the four o'clock.
The the work session meeting.
Yeah, they're not, yeah. I'll fix it and.
All right. Did anyone touch anything on the six o'clock one? I definitely have the stuff open, go ahead. No, let's start here, number four nine, okay, on page two, under the September eleventh. Um, minutes for the directing word on page four. The uh Cusay Dispatch first line changed third. He differ.
Oh, okay.
That was, I'm needing to add that down, because we made those changes last month. And then on page nine, same same last paragraph change she did him. Those were two changes that we moved to make and then I listed.
On August, October ninth?
September. On uh October nineteen, maybe minutes.
Oh, okay, so the changes didn't get made correctly for the September eleven? Okay, so um, so what was it?
On page four.
Okay.
Under Cusay Dispatch, first line, change he to her. And you just have to add that to this. Minutes, and then on page nine, last paragraph change she to be. And then on page three. Um, a citizen announced it was Linda Sheridan. And. It was the following day, it was a week from today, so it would have been a week later. I mean, she, her name should be added, and then the correction is. That first line is the following day, it was. Should have been a week, a week from now. And then uh listed through the second paragraph is tru- is parade, and then that's rain.
Yeah, okay.
And then um, so there's two places that it was to be trained, and then parade holiday train.
Just there for the parade part.
Yeah, and make it, but then putting up the train. So wherever the parade was, it's.
Okay.
And then on the page five. Clean up days, then ram. Then line, it says without force sort of personnel on the mountain, was it on site? They couldn't. Oh, well. Enough for not to get, yeah, on that, on the, not be on site, yeah, yeah, mountain. And then on twenty-two, committee update, admin committee update, it's Linda Sheridan. The name's spelled wrong. And second line, councillor Pointer is spelled wrong. So Linda Sheridan two spots. And pointed. On page six.
There's one more, there, like Stephanie Strauss.
How's your name spelled?
It's a straw, the foot.
Yeah, okay. All right, and then um, on page six. If those um councillor Armstrong not arguing. And I do, I don't understand.
Plastic cage, yeah.
So it should be transport. Transportation Broke Management Program, Virginia.
Okay.
Plastic cage, who knows?
Yes, I'm telling you, it's A I, but we do listen to them.
And then Woofy Beach is second line, she did he. And then also on the motion, Pointer is spelled wrong. On the vote.
Pointer on the vote?
Yeah, it's on the motion to withdraw from the I G account. With accounting, it's made by councillor Miller, seconded by councillor Porter Ray. For him.
Oh.
How many more changes do we have to make, let me just give you a copy. So are you, aren't just for time-saving purposes and. Yeah, I, I don't, I don't mind doing that, because I, I try to skip over and make changes. I went to get to go with him sometimes, but.
But you could have sent them to me.
Nope. It's too long to. Text. Line rooms there.
You come in every day, you could have dropped them out.
Yeah. Okay, well, if you just have a couple more, then we can just finish up. Already on the fireworks contract. That, well, that's wrong, and I'll just make you a copy of it. Because the figures don't match. And then on page seven. Under rate sheet of third, second paragraph, it's, our first paragraph is. There are coats spelled wrong in the bottom. The last page is ten mile lake association, it's a reduction of the county budget.
There was area up under the fire district, I didn't report anything on the.
One thing that she didn't catch, so we can put in there, on page three, under citizen comments. So the resident spoke to introduce, introduce herself, stating she had purchased a house in San Jose.
It is what she said. I went back. Yeah, uh, cuz I didn't think so either. And so I went and listened to it, and I was just like, yeah, does this sound like? I don't know, I know it's Queen, I, cuz it's up on Queens, I knew where she. Said she was living on Queens, but um, she said. Like.
And that's.
That was Leo, yeah, nope, I double-checked.
All right.
Triple-checked.
So. Since we have to modify all those minutes, uh. We just will go ahead and. Put those on to the next meeting then.
If you want, or just, just to.
Approve this amendment.
Yeah, we can amend them, and. Cuz the context is there, it's just basically names from E I.
Can find that. Then on the October thirtieth, when we just received tonight, the only thing yet to do is we have um councillor Harden's on and here. But then on page two, Mayor Woods noted that councillor Harden is present from the executive session. So that conference, you just.
Okay, cuz she, she missed part of that meeting.
Cuz she wasn't there for the special, but she showed up for the executive.
So.
Okay.
Somehow she was, you know, she needs a vote. Executive.
Okay.
Okay, I would that we approve the minutes from. October ninth, regular meeting at six o'clock, and the October thirtieth special session. Minutes. With corrections.
I'll second.
Special, uh motions made by councillor Armstrong to approve the minutes from October ninth at six P M. And October thirtieth, special session, executive session. With changes made, and councillor Miller seconded. Uh, any further session? All right, we'll move into a vote. We'll do it the new way this time, councillor Millie.
Aye.
Mayor Wood, aye. Councillor Armstrong, aye. Councillor Ward, aye. All right, motion carries, minutes are passed. All right, item number seven, correspondence received.
I just included those for an informational unless, and if you guys have any. Questions. They came in the mail. After. It was the. Um. Which ones are they, you know, Amanda, it sounds like the ones that. It has to do with the. I don't know, maybe we didn't get the fact that I sent them to you.
Which one isn't?
It was. There were three letters that came. Regarding, one was the letter from the state or for business Oregon. I can't.
Was it D E Q?
D E Q. Let's see, they, they would have came.
The permits?
Uh-huh. Remember, what's that? No, it was about, let me.
Oh, the one for Shannon Baker.
Yeah, no, that one, that one's different, that's a D E Q that came from Buddy. That. Part of his staff report, I think. Let me go get. All right, but I sent him to you via email.
All right. If we might just push that one down, we'll, we'll be allowed to make consent agenda, come back to this one. After the next item, give her a second. So move it. Move it, so, I mean, I have another eight. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. The motion. We're gonna just. Okay, come back to, I just didn't know how much time we needed, so we're moving on with the consent agenda.
I have it, yeah, it's just right here.
For discussion, I'll, I will move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, a motion's been made by councillor Armstrong to approve the consent agenda and seconded by councillor Miller. Any discussion? I just have a couple of questions, is um. Also on like, I have a couple of question terms, like, the contact with search to see where we're at on thirty, forty, where are we at?
Um. Well. We were behind because of the new field, the new, the previous C P A.
Mm-hmm.
Um, was behind. And let's see, I think that Stephanie says that they're all cut, she got them all cut up, bought up. She has all of the L G I P caught up. Uh, the interest. Uh, in the, into the right place. And so anyway, with the purse, I believe she said that she's caught up, Stephanie. Stephanie has now been made the reporter, we mo- removed um the previous C P A, she's no longer on there. And Stephanie i- is now the reporter, and she says she's caught up.
And then where are we with the twenty-three, seventy-four audits?
Um.
I'm just gonna call the, the audit company myself, um, I was speaking out of my car to do that, I just talked to her about it on Monday. It was the. I think we need to call the original company and figure out what's going on with that. But I, that's, I don't know if there's any other news on here, and.
Uh, let's see, did I, no. We, um. We went down. The budget officer and I went down and met with Stephanie, and we um. Discussed the audit, she's definitely gonna help us with it, help getting, and she says that once. She's got that um, the notice of engagement signed, then we would start working on all of these other. All of the things, the other things that she needs to catch up on. I um, there were, there are a lot, there's a lot of things, there's a lot of items, the audit, we know that was a problem, I haven't heard anything else from them. But we're gonna start working together.
And come before, I just, we received a two thousand dollar grant from V L C D.
Mm-hmm.
For whatever.
It's a planning grant.
But I just have a couple of questions on what um.
Oh, this is all of the things that I did, huh?
Yeah. It's on your report.
Okay. That's why I have to put them in a pa- on paper.
Councillor.
Yeah, there was no, um, I did, our um. Biller was out last week. And then I did reach out to uh Stephanie, and she, our, our new C P A. And she said that she is still working on something, so she's gonna do some more reporting.
So we should remove that.
Okay.
We don't approve something we don't have.
Oh, utility billing, oh. Staff report. Okay.
So I'll renew my motion to. Approve the incentive agenda minus utility billing staff report. All right.
Yes, I'll second the amended motion, amended motion.
New amended motion, or amended motion has been made to approve the consent agenda minus the util- utility billing report. The seconded by councillor Miller. Is there any further discussion on the consent agenda? Okay. We'll move into a vote, councillor Miller.
Aye.
Mayor Wood, aye. Councillor Armstrong, aye. Councillor Ward.
Aye.
All right, consent agenda passes. Item number nine, payment register and vendor item detail report. We just got.
Um, well, no, I just, cuz I have a separate, the reason we separate that is because of. The one councillor who is, who usually would recuse. So we separated.
Got it.
Separated now, I guess it's actually eight, um, item eight, and I think I put nine on, yeah, on the staff report.
All right, so we'll move on to item number ten, citizen comments. Anyone on the comment list?
So, uh, last October seventeenth, we had speakers come through, we had thirty-two cars. Uh, they stopped over at Thirteenth Street, uh, they were about one and a half hours late, I did get a text by from uh. Brian to let us know that they've had some breakdowns, so they're gonna be late, so I did post it on Facebook. Uh, when they got here, I posted they're here, and uh, that's when people started coming. And um, they had uh, several people brought some toys, there's a, a bag of toys that went. A, a big bag of toys that went into the toy chest, Mrs. Claus was there, Mr. Santa Claus wasn't, because he was busy. Uh, there was a grandmother who read it on Facebook, who came all the way from Cusay with her three grandchildren.
Oh.
And uh, they got there just in time, cuz they were just starting to leave, and um. So the three little, there's two little girls, and they got hugs from uh Mrs. Claus. And was able to get some pictures taken, so that was kind of nice.
Yeah.
Um, the holiday train, uh, we're getting ready to put it up. I'm. Trained, next Thursday looks like it's gonna be clear, and I don't have any doctor's appointments, I have some surgery two weeks ago, so. We've been quite busy, so next Thursday, we're going to uh start putting it up, while we're calling all owners of the, the cars and the um, the houses. I did talk to Dennis today uh to say, did you see my text, and he said, what text? And so he's aware that uh, he's gonna bring the stuff that the city has over uh from his thing over here. Uh, I did talk to Amanda prior to texting everyone, or um, and to let them know if they couldn't bring it on the day. They could drop it off here, and so it should be stored behind here, so. Not, so hopefully, next Thursday, the, the train will be up, uh, I'm anticipating either Thursday afternoon or Friday. Uh, connecting and putting the lights on, that, so um. Happy Thanksgiving, and the Christmas season is coming.
Thank you, I'm on the list.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
I'm deep on Northern Resort. Um, I've, I've been trying to pay a little more attention to what's going on, and understand some of the financial concerns of the city. And understand of the fireworks is having a difficult time coming together. With respect to having enough monies to pay the vendor, and if that isn't the case any longer, then I can go sit down. But I just wanted to float an idea that um. Some feedback from the last couple of years, that the fireworks were, you know, a little bit long. Maybe a little bit louder than what we've done in the past, and just wanted to offer a suggestion that perhaps we would. Send out and get um a different bid, or say, you know, just financially, uh, just not gonna make it, we need to dial back on the monies. Um, that we have allocated, that they're asking for, whether it's a new vendor, and maybe just have a little bit of a. Less impactful Fourth of July here, uh, given the state of things that we're all against. You know, and just the general financial picture of things in general, from federal, state, local, and everybody's pocketbooks are a little bit different this year, and. That sort of thing happening, that it might make sense to do a bit of a dial back. Not saying eliminate it, it's something that's been traditional in history for the twenty-five years that we've been here. But maybe that would make sense for this year to just have a little bit of a lesser impact, but um, something to.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there any others? I, I think it's, just so you know, this year we can't, because we've just signed a contract for the thirty-five thousand. And we have a contract.
Oh, okay.
And we can't, and we made the eight thousand seven hundred fifty thousand in October, we have another payment in between. Of that in their balance. In the July, July fourth or something like, or fourteenth or something. The fireworks show is gonna be shorter.
It is, it is gonna be.
Certainly. Anyways, but. Yeah, I, I think we talked about a fundraiser too, we tried to. Or, you know, getting boots out earlier, we're trying to get more.
Makes that too, with some of it, is how, how do we get more of that activity, and that seems to, I think, have fallen off a little bit for whatever reason.
Yeah.
And there's no recourse going to the vendor to say, hey. Given all this stuff that I just said about the financial picture, just about on every plate these days, that we need to redo, so we need to rethink. To want to be something, but we just need to do a little bit different. Um, and just see what they might say, just, you know, condition, I think we're, oh, it's the money, but.
Yeah, I'm looking at the budget next year too, I'm pretty sure there's gonna have to be a reduction in the. New fireworks on budget, so I think.
If you're going to do fundraisers, I think January. You still have Germany.
Yeah, that definitely, the sooner the better.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, we used to start with Bruce Best in November, is when I started doing our things. But I just had a real quick thought, is maybe we could have a fireworks booth. They, we used to have, there used to be a fireworks booth up at the corner, like at C F P or something like that. And that hasn't happened in a really long time, we used to do it for my, one of my girls, one of the organizations that they, you make quite a bit of money. In just that four days or whatever has, in that, so.
Yeah, before lemonade stand, but.
Yeah.
That's a good idea. Is that something you could check into, Sharon?
I can't check into seeing about, and then we, and, yeah, cuz I don't. I know it stopped probably in about twenty fifteen, is when the, who, somebody used to have a month before it's there.
Okay. Move on to item number, or old business, item number eleven, the D O R report. But we already discussed that, so.
Nothing new.
Um. Item number twelve, the Cusay Dispatch Services. We got another bill for that.
Yeah.
All right, I'll talk to them about. Why are we getting more bills for it? I tried to reach out to um Mayor Benetti, but I, to no avail, so.
Okay. Yeah.
Have they done any follow-up on the bills they send, or just?
No, they just send them.
Okay.
And, so.
All right, um, item number thirteen, the FEMA pick 'em ordinance. I see you guys put on here. The N F I P notice of lapsed insurance.
Yeah, I thought maybe you'd wanna see that, so I thought I'd include it right there.
Yeah.
That we still have to, even though they're not issuing any new policies, we still ha- are required to enforce. Our um ordinance that we have on. On, in our. Doning code.
Didn't we adopt it?
We did, we, no, we didn't adopt.
Talked about it.
We had talked about it.
Mission.
Um. Maybe, do, um councillor Ward, you have. You, you, he and I worked together on it.
Technically, we're dealing with new regulations, the planning commission has to hold a hearing on it.
Hmm.
And then it has to come up with a council, and I don't know if that's happening.
We did that pick 'em, where we adopted the one, the pickup, but we have not worked on an ordinance.
When you say a pick 'em, you're talking about the moratorium, is that right?
Well, yes.
That was.
And then we, and then, yeah, and then we put a moratorium, then the council put a moratorium on it, we picked the pick 'em, the council. Approved it, and then there was that the ordinance needed to be. Um, prepared. And then the count, then um, other cities were saying not to do anything, all this. Pre- um, and so we haven't done anything on the ordinance.
Some moratorium on all development.
Mm-hmm.
In the P um. The board plan.
Yep.
Unless and until we adopt the law of code, it has been put forth as the new standard by FEMA.
Then we had. Then we had, I had, um, the Elcof, Henry made a, he did a, he completed, I think you helped too, didn't you? On that, the, the model code ordinance, both of you are working.
Packet last month. I don't have seen that.
Yeah, yeah, it was started, but then, but then the other cities, the, uh, the, um, when going to the planning workshops and state, everybody was saying not to do anything. Um, all, and so nothing's been done.
It works fine if your pick 'em is a moratorium, and you're a city that doesn't have much floodplain property. Um, it also works fine if the pick 'em you chose was to go case by case, and apply the new standards on a case by case basis without a code.
Yeah.
But we didn't choose that, chose a moratorium.
Okay.
And we have a pretty extensive set of floodplain properties, and if you recall, we've already had some property owners wanting to do some development, but they can't.
I'm pretty sure we've got property owners feeling developed.
Whatever they want.
And if they just do the development, then we're technically not enforcing.
E- exactly. It's going to be lovely.
Lovely.
Well, no, but that's where it is, that's where it stands, and that's, and, and the reason I put that in the packet is to get it going again, the, uh, as the dialogue. Again, we need to do something, I think, that even, and I can talk to, we can bring it in front of the council again, or we can.
Let's, why don't we please have planning commission do what they need to do to get the ordinance passed, and then bring it to council, correct? Cause that's the way it needs to proceed, so let's direct standing.
Okay, so yeah, kick it back to the planning department, cause we kicked it to you with the pick 'em, and then you guys could just kick it back to us, and then we will do what we need to do.
Yeah, if, if, once planning commission has held the land use hearing on the ordinance that they proposed, then we can go ahead and, and adopt it.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, so if we can make sure planning cares about that, that meeting they have, that'd be great.
It, the, the beauty of it is, is there's cities around us that have done all the work, that have, that have adopted ordinances. The, um, and so we can use their examples of what they've done.
Okay.
So.
All right, item number fourteen, Association of Law Owners of Osprey Village Planning Community. I got an email from me, Counselor Ward, with some more information, about, I think it was a couple weeks ago. Did you send it to all the counselors?
No.
No?
I sent it to you and to Sharon.
Okay. Um.
It was a piece of information that the council would question. I'm not reading this one yet.
Okay. I'll, I'll send that out to all the other counselors. I think we're probably gonna need to discuss it with our, um, engineer present.
That was your consensus, if all was.
Yeah.
Okay.
So if we can see if, um, maybe I'm sure we might have another, some sort of workshop item pop up during this meeting, but let's put that on just kinda like the table right now, that we want Erin to come to the next workshop to talk about that.
Okay.
Okay. So any other discussion on that item? All right, item number fifteen, update employee handbook. You've added the social media policy to the.
No, I didn't. I, I.
Oh, that needs to be added.
To the rules of the council.
You put.
The employee handbook.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was thinking of rules of council, I was jumping ahead.
So the employee handles, yeah, isn't that, we were gonna have a work session, and I forgot to put that, the date.
Oh, that's because we were going to use our current one instead of one that was not.
Yeah, yeah. And so we, and I think you set a date, but I can't remember what it, no?
Cause they're being, I, I don't know.
Okay.
No, because we didn't get, we didn't get to that part yet. Okay, so we'll, um, put that on our.
That's not workshop.
That we're gonna plan, we're, we're gonna set a date for this meeting.
Okay.
And if we could, maybe at the, uh, to- tomorrow, if we can get in our boxes a copy of the current employee handbook versus the one with the, the proposed changes, then we can have some time to review it.
Yeah, I have them all, I have them all printed out.
Oh, okay. Now you're probably around with our last.
Yeah, they were printed out. I got, I think I probably am giving them all out, as my pile's getting smaller.
That was on June.
They saw.
Okay. Okay, um, rules of the council.
There's, there, um, that's where I needed help on finding the social media. I asked where it was in the email, cause I can't find, uh, um, where it was discussed previously, or was it? And then, on the video, it says that there was a rules of the council, social media policy adopted. And I'm not able to find that adopted, or where it was adopted. And I was hoping, that's why I reached out to the council, to ask if anybody knew or remembered, it wa, it wasn't in the past year.
It was Melissa.
Oh, okay.
Whenever that was.
In twenty twenty-three? Well, good me, I looked in twenty twenty-two and twenty, cause she was here from twenty, February twenty twenty-two to December of twenty twenty-three.
I was on council twenty-three, I wanna say.
Okay.
End of twenty-three.
Okay.
Sounds all right.
And it was adopted? Or was it just?
It was adopted. You know, I remember adopting it.
Okay, so I'll look more. Um, and then there's a few little other ar- areas that, um, I'm hoping our new recorder can help me with. Uh, putting some foot, footnotes on, uh, I, I was trying to do it through, with Google to learn how to do it, but through the footnotes that I need to add.
So would you like to just, we'll revisit that most of the, okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right, admin committee update. I, we have one member of the admin committee, this is Derek. Have we, has anyone figured out when we're gonna start doing that, and when?
Well, what I was, um, I made, and you guys can correct me, or pick a different day. What we used to do was, we had check runs two times a month. And so, the, what they used to do is have the admin meeting before, or, um, they would review the invoices before the check runs. So we picked the days of the fifth and the nineteenth for an admin, or rounding up.
That's before the, the day before the check runs, or the day after?
Starting in December. Um, I, and work out the days, of course, but I was thinking, I think I told Stephanie when we would do them on the fifth and the nineteenth, or the weeks of that. And then we could have this admin commi- committee. From what I understand, they used to have that admin committee before the check runs, so they could review the invoices. And then she would cut the checks, and then we'd just go ahead, and then they would be signed, and then we'd mail her.
This is kind of another review.
It's another review, and what it's gonna help do is cut down on duplicate payments.
Yeah.
And, 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 or, then, or payments, you need to see what's coming up. Just as, for instance, we have an interest payment that's coming up. You, you need to know that. And so that's what the admin committee did, is that they knew, and it was held, they were held before the city council meeting, so that they could ex, the, the, the admin committee meeting was held before the city council meeting, and then it could be anything that, any problems or whatever would be brought up at the meeting. I'm pretty sure, Shaleen was on the, on the, um, or Counselor Higgins was on the admin committee, and is that correct? Am I describing how it worked?
Okay, so is that date okay for the people who are on the admin committee? Those dates?
Well, the shift is on Friday.
Yeah.
So it's, we need to pick a date, so if we pick
Pick a, pick a date.
First and third Wednesday of every month, the first and the third, because the days change.
Right.
So first and third Wednesday every month is the date the checks issue. Then the admin would need, the week has been every Friday prior to, so the first and third Wednesday, I mean, first and third Friday, scan the bills in, so we would meet that Wednesday.
Oh, okay, scan the bills on the first and third Friday?
Yeah, the first and third Friday. So you scan the bills the Friday before, Friday before the first and third.
Okay.
That would give her Wednesday, Thursday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Wednesday to get the bills to us. And if you have them to her by three o'clock on Friday, we could have the admin committee on the second and fourth Wednesday to review them, or Thursday, but, uh, might be doing it on Thursday. Do a council meeting on them.
Then we're hoping that to bring them to the council.
Right, so if we do it on every second and fourth Wednesday, who might get to today's offer before you, you have those bills.
Fourth Wednesday, okay, well, Counselor, will you write that down for us, and so that we can?
That's for you, what time do you, works best for you?
Mornings, afternoons?
Because we have to get on one one.
Maybe afternoon? Three five, I think.
Like?
Two, three? Hey, what time?
Yeah, must be nice.
Yeah.
I have you right there.
Yeah. I'm almost there. So every second and fourth Wednesday at two o'clock, we'll meet and go over the bills, and then then they have two days to scan them by three o'clock on Friday, and then they'll issue the checks the following. Okay, I'll just make you a copy of this share.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay. We'll move on to eighteen, update on the South Eighth Street property. Um, there's been no action on that with our for sale sign out front, so I just went ahead, that, uh, Realtor that prepares the CMA for us just called her and said, let's get it listed. Um, I haven't signed anything yet, but, um, me, me and Counselor Armstrong were talking about negotiating a little bit lower commission rate, if possible. I mean, I feel like if it's, it's up to you guys, but I think if she just has a normal market rate for commission, we should just list it and get it on market, and try to get it sold, cause we decided we wanted to do this like three months ago, so.
I, I, I think that if we can, because of the market, I talked to Rolder, and she says that two and a, if, you know, it used to be thirty percent and three percent, or six percent, but she says lately, they've been doing two and a half percent, and two and a half percent, and that would make a difference to us. And then to do it, and she says that she could even check with her, the owner of her company, to see if they would do it for two percent, because the market is so giffy right now, so. I, I think we should do the best we can, because we may end up having to lower the price. And if we can save anything, because that, you know, it's gonna end up the cost. So I think that you should try and get.
Counselor Ward? Just a procedural reminder. We held our, uh, public hearing and made a decision to sell the property. Um, we voted to have Mayor Wood as our agent. And if we actually go with a Realtor, we, we have to convene and vote to have the person our agent, so we can potentially meet with them in a section of the session that's necessary.
Yeah.
Until we have that quote, you can't have this news.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, definitely. No, I haven't signed anything. I just wanted to get it moving, and that person is the only one who submitted a CMA to us since we discussed listing it. Did you send out notice to all the voters? Did we hear the CMA?
No, I didn't send anything out. Um, I just, we just decided that, uh, um, you, the council appointed Mayor Wood as the agent, and so she's making the decision as the agent.
So I'll do my best to negotiate a, a lower commission rate, but um, yeah. I'm gonna try to do the best possible deal for the city, but we should also probably just get it sold, so. Anything else? All right, move on to new business, item nineteen, grant follow-up, Counselor Harden. She's not here tonight. Um. I talked to, uh, Dennis today about the, the streets grant that he got for two hundred and fifty thousand, and he's trying to work with the county to possibly get sidewalks packaged into that deal. So hopefully the county will help out with that. But as far as, uh, any, anything else I'm not aware of for that?
No, no, I don't have anything.
Um, item number twenty, ordinance codification.
Uh, back in January or February, we, um, talked about a goal was to get our ordinances codified. And I contacted the, um, Eagle, the American legal association, and they give us a quote of, um, for three hundred pages, it'd be like seventy-eight hundred. And then, um, I recontacted her, because I want the council to approve it again, make sure with our budget. And where we're at, and because it would, so Michael went through the agendas from two thousand sixteen to twenty twenty, uh, five, and found that we have passed twenty-five ordinances. And then now, to get, to find out where they are, I would have to come in and go through books, we have to find the pages and count them. Um, but before any of that's done, I might make sure the council was okay with that, and, um, I found out, talking to her this last time, that the bid for seven thousand eight hundred dollars and some odd cents was for three hundred pages. If we had, and I've been at so much a page, twenty dollars a page, for if you go over that. As I'm talking to her, I said, so what if it's less? What if we have two hundred and ninety pages? She goes, you lose it. So I thought, well, it's better for us to go a lower amount. Count the pages, you need to count your pages and your ordinances, and then we'll know what the price is. But we just wanna go a little bit less, and then get a bill for the difference. Then to pay the top price and not have all the, not have that many pages, trying to save money for the city. Uh, um, so, if, when I went from three hundred and seventy-five pages, it went to eighty-seven twenty-five, so anywhere between seven thousand eight hundred to eight thousand seven twenty-five. We can get codified, they'll go through and, um, we check this, the ORSs to make sure they're still current. We are writing ordinances that, we have other ones that have been lost. In fact, different, your, our website says one of those pieces, we don't know, so we, we need to find them.
The contract.
Um, I talked to the budget officer, and she says that you should please take, and look at the, nine thousand dollars, which is more than we need, from line five, zero, 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 three, six, contracted services. They're forty percent out of fund one, ten percent out of fund three, seven, fifty percent out of fund seven. They have money to do it, so we can do it, and this is something that really needs to be done. Because as you're going all over, so we quit questioning this.
Without forty, we stand about twenty, that'd be, I guess, not many.
No, four, two, ten, that's what he said.
Let's say we.
Oh, I suppose to say.
Oh, no, 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 there's twenty thousand in there.
But we're, we're okay.
Okay.
See, that, I'm happy.
What are we, is there anything in that detailed budget about what we use the con- What are we, is there anything in that detailed budget about what we use the contracted services by item four? Maybe I've divided with. Right about it, two, six.
Breakup, she has copy machine, airport fence lease and miscellaneous is fifteen, sixteen thousand. So without a budget to actual, but we should be okay. And if, but a street in the sewer plant has no problem, the general fund. Then there is a thing that for five hundred and ninety-five dollars, once we're up, then we can come back to the council and decide. They, unless it has to be done at the time, they will maintain. We will use their website. They'll link it to ours, we push a button and it'll take you to American. All of your ordinances and stuff and they will keep that current. Whenever we send a new ordinance, they will automatically update that, so it's always current. They um will give us so many books. And um then they'll send me pages to update them, so you don't have to ever worry about not having an out-of-date book again. And they will train you, they'll come and train you, they'll record it and then they'll. Give you a link to it, from what I understand, so any new hires will can be trained on how to use it and stuff, so.
That was a yearly fee?
Five hundred and ninety-five dollars.
yearly fee?
Yes.
So are, are you requesting tonight that we just let you gather the ordinances?
And well, that's the first step, yes. And then get a firm price to gather the ordinances, count and see what it is, and we could potentially be spending. Anywhere from eighty-seven to, and I am, Peggy said to round it up at nine thousand, because we can't count that, but anywhere between eighty-seven and. Seventy-eight and eighty-seven.
But there's nothing to approve.
Well, it's, it's, I'll be going into the office in staff time, you know, trying to find things and it would be. Like Sharon says, I would be down.
Oh, no, yeah, yeah, no, I'm talking about the actual. It, it can go forward on it. You're just asking for us to go out and get an actual bid that we can approve.
I, I have a bid, I have a bid and she sent me a new one, but I don't want to use it. And do it until I get a count, because the. One, the municipal code one five, see, these are all the ordinances we found, one part of them. But it won't be using all of them, because many of them that are one five five and one five four. Are standalone, um, Carol, they won't be in the book. Because there's so many, it would cost us three thousand just to do those. So she says that that would be another project, but it would be easy to keep them together and above, and she's up with comprehension plan. The um, the comprehension and the subdivision one five four and one five five. A lot of cities have those standalone, so if there's any changes in it, you don't pay for it, they're just changed in the book. So, so what am I asking for?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, I, I'm. I, in the city, I think we need, if everybody agrees, we need to do something with the ordinances, then um. It's gonna be, it could be up to nine thousand dollars. I want a tentative. Agreement for that, so then I will start trying to find all these ordinances.
So you're requesting that we approve uh an amount to get the ordinances codified?
Yes, and then once we find them and I figured them out, then she will send something for you to sign.
I'm sorry, if there are contracts that's gonna be in favor of you to.
Yeah, that's what I, and so when I sent you before, she sent me another one, but before we even. So I don't want to sign the contract till I know how many pages.
I think you want to just gather all that stuff, get pages and yeah, then you'll know.
Yeah, then we.
My time and. Go bothering staff to try and find these, going through all these books to find them, to make copies and count them if. You didn't, to say, if you didn't think that we're gonna be able to spend the nine thousand dollars.
Well, I think if it's in our budget, it sounds like a great idea. I think we're all in a, at least. From what they talk about, we're all in agreement that it needs to be done, but I'm not willing to approve any sort of amount without a contract for.
And I, and I don't want you to, like I said, because I don't want to pay this amount if it's gonna be less, there's a chance it would be less.
So, yeah, I mean, I, I'm fine with you going in and doing it. You getting the information and bringing it back in council for approval with a contract inside of us that I can make motion.
Yeah, and like I said, with new staff and stuff, I, I, I think I, you know, I don't want to be showing up and saying. Start finding, finding books, I'd work out in the air, but we'd have to find them.
Is, is there anything?
I'm just thinking about what's on the board. About our steps we're supposed to go through. With items like this, you know, um, yeah, I agree that. Our, our ordinances should be codified, um, that's what the old grown-up cities do. Makes it possible for staff and citizens and everyone else to actually find out, hey. What are the rules of the road here? Um, yeah, so it's important. I don't know. I don't know how important it is to them. With the other challenges we face and maybe it is, going to be, it isn't.
And see, by us looking for raising fees, we have an ordinance that. We're gonna have to do something with if we want to raise fees, because a resolution can't change the ordinance. So we have to find these, I'm not asking staff time to do it, but I'm saying that this is something. I'm gonna volunteer to do it. Nikki Varden will volunteer to come in and help do it, but. You know, like I said, we're gonna have to bring the books in here and go through them.
Said maybe you started drawing a target, because. Uh, the entire corpus of ordinances and the current municipal code is thousands of pages. So you, you may wanna, you may wanna say, um, we're gonna look at. One fifty-four, which has never been codified.
No, I would, I was not looking at one fifty-four or one fifty-five, because those are hundreds of pages. Those would be standalone projects. I'm talking about our, the current municipal code book, which is about three hundred pages. Yes, I just counted them. I just, there are two hundred and two pages and when they're double column, they're coming with two, so she's figuring three hundred. And then I have to count these, I'm at twenty-five pages already. So that's why I was figuring seventy-five on top of that. So yes, no, I, I, I literally like that. So. Or are you, we're just taking senses, are you okay with me coming in, looking for?
Yes, sure.
If you wanted to, I'm finally seeing someone in to look at and I. But we have councils that say if we're gonna be doing something, I, I just wanted to make sure that there's no problem, because, like I says. My plan spent hours coming up with this, checking every agenda. To make sure that we're not missing and I hope with the new city recorder, we'll go get a system with. With memory, because the past couple of minutes, we, you know, we used to go one through a thousand and now all of a sudden they changed it. Back to one again, there's the twenty-five oh one, twenty-four oh one. So you can't just assume and look, you have to go through each of the agendas and find the number.
Okay, well, that would be great if you did that, so. Hopefully we'll get a little bit organized on that and, all right, we'll move on to. Set date for an executive session regarding possible litigation. Possibly, um, if we could. Maybe do the workshop executive session on the same date, we're not coming in for multiple meetings, since we're doing a workshop anyways.
Would have to check with Gary for his availability.
Yeah, so the, the situation. Gary doesn't. He's already given us his opinion via email. Um, so yes, we'll check for his availability, so maybe if we could throw out a few dates.
Cause I haven't, I haven't reread the, like, the section of state law for a while, but it's my recollection. That an executive session of this type is for the purposes of counsel discussing litigation with legal counsel.
Yeah, um.
I believe it's actually both. You can, you can do either one, the vote council does not necessarily have to be available, it's traditional, but council would be.
Yes. Okay, so let's pick two di- different dates, okay, and then I'll let you guys know, sorry, we'll throw out two dates for Gary. Um. Let's see, this is the. What about the last Thanksgiving? Uh. Um. Are you guys all right with uh? Like maybe, you'll number twenty-fourth? My thing, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Um. Possibly, we'll, we'll do the executive session first and then the workshop after, so we can get Gary on and off. Um, let's shoot for. Four, is that all right with you guys? I think it's dark so late and I'm in bed at seven o'clock, all right, great. And then we'll start the workshop at five.
Do you think that we'd be able to do the employee handbook in one hour in Osprey?
No, I'm, we're doing workshop second, so, I mean.
If you set at five o'clock, but how many are you gonna like go a bit of stuff?
I, no, it's not like I have to be in bed at seven o'clock, obviously, but uh, you know, I'm just saying, we can kind of go through the workshop and we'll. Decide we don't want to, you know, we'll, we'll do as much as we can. So executive at four, workshop at five, yeah. What about um the twenty-fifth for second date, the Tuesday? Some people may be gone for Thanksgiving, uh. Then twenty-fifth, I was just thinking we can throw up on Monday or Tuesday for Gary. Or, or we can. Okay. It was four P M. again, we're free, so. All right, I'll ask him about the twenty-fourth or twenty-fifth. Great.
And if he is gone for Thanksgiving for that holiday, did you want to try any for the week of the seventeen?
I can't do that week, but maybe the first or second of December I can.
Let's try and keep something in there, even if we just have to do the executive session, not a work session, because we gotta get that decided before we go on to that.
Yeah, okay. All right, uh, employee contract review. Do you want to put that in our? Is she printing it now?
I think that's what she may have to do.
Much before that. We can go ahead and have our new um city reporter, Courtney Holstead. Um, she's here tonight, she wanted to introduce herself and um say a little bit about herself and then we'll kind of go over the contract, so. Wanna come up to the podium up there and.
Sure. Hi, councillor, it's nice to make some review I haven't met before. My name is Courtney Holstead, I will be starting as the city reporter, um. Leading my contact with Google, um, as we be in the office on Monday. Um, I was born and raised in the Willamette Valley before then, um, I have a bachelor's in criminal justice. Um, I spent three years as the deputy city reporter in the city of Resports. Um, and uh, a year and a half in between that, I've been an operations manager for a nonprofit in Spain. And so I'm coming back to be significant.
Thank you. Well, hopefully, once everything's good, we're hoping Courtney will be in the office on Monday, having contract examples, so. Yeah.
Did you guys?
Thank you for it.
Did I?
Yes, yeah.
And it was, did I just have a platform? Did, did you send me some?
With that, did you send it out to everybody?
I did send it out for the whole package, so.
Yeah, and then the, I, and then you also, um, we're gonna have the. I can use the doc description plus the I, the.
Oh, the, oh, you want all of the whole packet?
That will be attached to the contract, but you sent it to all the councillors, you know.
Yeah, okay. Cause it came to me and then I just forwarded, right?
Yes.
Okay.
That, yes.
So do you have enough of it or you want, I just gave you just those pages, just the contract itself, if. Do you want me to get the rest of it too?
The contract itself is fine.
Okay.
I've already reviewed it and I did, I did, done my homework, but I'll give you guys a few minutes too. We made sure that all the councillors were aware and it was. Little bit more transparent this time.
And uh, and then when it's just executed, you're going to add the um, the. Um, the doc description as an attachment and also the I, I M C, what it is.
I have that all saved if you want it.
And I, but it will be attached.
Okay.
Sign the.
Oh, okay.
As attachment.
And Courtney has not requested any changes to the contract, so. I think your name's spelled, is it C O U R T E N E Y? Okay, so that, we'll change that in here, cause I think it was spelled without the E and, yes.
Where these are found.
It's C O U R T E N E Y, also. No, it's uh, C O U R T E N E Y and E Y. Yeah. All right, do I have a motion? And you guys still?
So the motion is to, what, offer, we've already offered, no.
Accept the appointment.
I move that we accept the employment agreement and authorize the mayor to find the agreement.
Second.
All right, so it's been made by councillor Armstrong to accept the appoint, appointment agreement. Authorize the mayor to sign on behalf of the city and it's been accepted by councillor Miller, sorry for the discussion. I'm just so excited, so. Hopefully, yeah, let the staff go see it, so hopefully.
Yeah.
Right, such a right action.
So we did, we should then put down that she's gonna start this, her starting.
Yeah, well, yeah.
My, my motion should include that.
I think you're just approving a contract. Well, it says, cause it says in this day and. Yeah. All right, we'll move on to a vote. Uh, councillor Miller?
Aye.
Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Councillor Armstrong?
Aye.
Councillor Ford?
Aye.
All right. Welcome, Courtney. See you Monday. All right. Um, item number twenty-three, appointment to council. So we have a council position open and we have three applications.
What you mean?
Oh. Hey, sir, if you guys are gonna, are you, I didn't make. I didn't write any questions.
Well, so. In the past. When I was appointed council, I did a speech. But I don't, I don't know, we, we didn't ask anyone to prepare anything, so I don't think it's fair of us to ask for a. A speech or anything, but I think we all are. We know these people. But, um. I would, what, what's the procedure?
The, the ones I've watched is that they had a table set up and they actually did an interview. And, um, when there were three, when there's one, I was disappointed, but I watched the one just the other day when they had the three. For, in March thirteenth, they had a, of twenty twenty-three, there was this, they had three candidates. That applied. And they had an interview. So we just have them promote, say their name and then. The birthday question, asking is not, um, the votes.
Yeah, that's my own team. Alright, well, if, you know, I'm not, I don't think we should make it mandatory because we didn't. Yeah, so if anyone would like to come up and. You know. Try. And then we'll write down the vote.
Mayor and council, I'm Terry MacCuff, longtime resident of Lakeside. And I've been attending the meetings now for nearly a year, so I just felt that I could be helpful because I could get the real money. I'm aware of the trials and tribulations and I'm excited to see the uphill trend that we're now heading.
Awesome, thank you. Hi stranger.
My name is Randy Thomas, and again, thank you council and. Seth for having us. Uh, up here to see what we can do to. Be part of the city council. I've had the privilege of being in the city government. Since two thousand twenty. And I got talked in by Sharon. If you come in part of the east. Which was good, cause I was one of those who always wanted to be involved. And I moved here. And I was involved with the city's, uh, planning commission. As under the guy, under the hoodlidge, uh, Rob Ward. And others that had given me, uh, some insight to how to do things, and of course being involved with it. Also, I, I got to become the, uh, chair of the city's, uh, planning commission. And had learned. A lot about the code, ordinances, being involved with all of the, uh, aspects of making our citizens. Uh, part of our decision making. We've gotten everything from, uh. Planning on, from roadwork, the houseworks. So I came, uh, to believe that I could be a bigger part, my tenure, if you wanna call it. Uh, as far as the amount of time left as a planning commission, it's about us. And so my thought is I would transition that to become a city councillor. And so I've been looking forward to seeing that would be something to work. I feel that I could be a part of it. I'm definitely not a yes person, but I am a part of a group's. Idea to transplant and transposing to, uh, the citizens' well-being, I'm all there. I like to see decisions being made and not, and, um, instead of being frustrated and be part of the problem. Be part, be involved and be part of the solution. So, that's what I'm gonna have.
I guess I'm last one. And I'm not gonna stand. Alright, uh, my name's Shawlee Haines, and I've also applied for the position because I've had it before. I've been involved with government since twenty thirteen. And, uh, it was just. Feeling like I would bring my experience to. Back to the council, let's, uh, be voting in. And right now I'm planning mission, which has been really incredible, and so. There's a lot of changes that have happened since I started with government, yeah. It's been a real, real interesting experience. And because we still live here, you know. We all want to see it. Develop nicely, a city, you know, go in the right direction, become a beautiful place that we love. And good decisions made, um, to be have, so. That's all. And, and look, you know me, so. That's it?
Thank you. Great. Is Randy still on the commission too?
I am.
Okay, so, okay, then your spots would just be open for applications, okay? Thank you. Alright, we have, have a. There is a soul. Valid in front of us.
One vote for Shalene. One vote for Terry. One vote for Terry. Another vote for Terry, so.
Welcome, thank you, um, we will. Um. Are you gonna swear in tonight?
I'll swear.
Okay, alright, well, um, she's getting me a little official script for that, so we'll, um. We're gonna do the fund request and then we'll swear anyway after that, is that alright? Okay, thank you. Alright. Alright, item number twenty-four of fund requests, these papers were just, uh, I'll pass these around to you guys. It'll be tonight about. The Lakeside Lions Club is requesting, uh, I'll just read it, uh, the Lakeside Lions Club, this is an email from. Thank you. I'm reaching out on behalf of the Lakeside Lions Club and working with Doris to help organize our upcoming Santa social event. The Lakeside Lions Club is a nonprofit organization dedicated to supporting our community and are excited to host this festive event on December twentieth. From two to four P M of the Lakeside Lions Club. We would like to kindly request a donation of one thousand dollars to help make this community event possible. Your support would go directly towards creating a fun and welcoming experience for welcome families and children. Please let us know at your earliest convenience what you might be able to contribute to help make our event a success. Thank you for your time, consideration and continued support of our community. Or in regards to Shia Johnson, Lakeside Lions Club Santa Social Committee. So. That would come out of our, uh. The same fund that we are giving the. L D O money, and I wanted to say that the L D O is not doing their Christmas event, I mean, they're doing the lights around town. But they're not requesting that. Twenty-seven hundred dollars? For that final event, so that money will not be spent, so we're saving that there.
Would we have on line number five zero five two seven, two thousand dollars for nonprofits? So that's where we'd be paid, okay, cause there, the Lions is a nonprofit.
Okay, so we can. Maybe take it out of five zero five two seven, so. Five zero five two seven, so. Does anybody have anything else, like a motion?
I'll make a motion to donate a thousand dollars to, for the Santa social events, the Lakeside Lions Club. Second.
Motion's been made by councillor Miller to donate a thousand dollars to Lakeside Lions Club and it's been seconded by councillor Ward, any further discussion? Alright. Uh, move into a vote, councillor Miller? Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Councillor Armstrong?
Aye.
Councillor Ward?
Aye.
Motion carries. So it sounds like a fun event. Alright, there's one more. So the Lakeside Fire Association, uh, this is kind of a, they didn't like write a formal request.
They didn't, she came in and she was a little bit too, didn't feel well, so she just, and so I, and. Um, she, I think she spoke to one of the councillors and they were told to. She, she, she contacted and I told her that she needed to come in and talk to you because it may be too late going, um, with the connection. That you would know.
Okay. So, yes. For the Angel Tree and Senior Stockings Suffer Project, and they're requesting, um, the Fire Department Association is requesting funds. To purchase items for the senior stockings, and they're requesting a thousand dollars. Um, and they're also Bible and Seater, so. Could we do the same?
Yep. We, we have two thousand dollars budgeted for them, so I.
That's always a big success, the Angel Tree, it's important for us, yes, definitely. Alright, do I have a motion?
I'll move to donate a thousand dollars to. Who was it, for the Angel?
Fire Department.
The Fire Department Association. For the Angel Tree Project.
Second. A motion's been made by councillor Miller to, to, uh, donate a thousand dollars to the Fire Department Association. It's been seconded by councillor Armstrong, sorry for the discussion. So, alright, we'll move into a vote, councillor Miller?
Aye.
Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Councillor Armstrong?
Aye.
Councillor Ward?
Aye.
Right, motion carries. Another great. Councillor Harden was talking about doing a holiday potluck. Or some sort of holiday party here at city hall. And I told her, Amanda sounds like the girl. So I don't know if she makes out to you about that.
No, not yet, not yet. Okay, thanks for the heads up.
But we have the perfect segue for. Um, on the twentieth, we're having our staff meeting, potluck, so. In the past, we've invited the councillors and everything to, or whoever wants to. Yeah, at eleven? Yeah, um, for our lunchtime, we're gonna do our staff report and that's, cause it's mandatory that we have a staff report once a month, so. And a safety meeting, so we'll. Um, have the potluck that day as well. They, those, the, um, employees, they're, they're missing. Us not doing more. Potlucks.
Thanks for the invite. Alright, are you ready to take your official oath of office?
I'm ready.
Okay, if you wanna stand up here at the podium? I think you repeat after me, right? Okay. I think so, yeah. Alright. I?
I.
Your name?
I, Terry Macca.
Do you solemnly swear and affirm?
Do you solemnly swear and affirm?
That I support the constitution and the laws of the United States.
That I support the constitution and the laws of the United States.
And the state of Oregon and the charter ordinances and rules and procedures for the city.
And the state of Oregon and the charter and the rules of the city of Lakeside.
And that I will faithfully and honorably perform the duties of the office.
I will faithfully and honor, honorably fulfill. The duties of the office.
For which I am about to assume.
For which I am about to assume.
Right.
She knocked, knocked, knocked it up a little.
No, you're perfect. Awesome, well. Um, do you wanna take your?
So order.
Name tag.
Yeah, we're hurting.
I got appointed, I had to come right up and get. Sorry, I kinda scrolled out.
Here's my spot.
Yep, this is your official spot. We'll get you a name.
You're gonna stop me if I do something wrong.
Yep, this is what this is for. Alright. So, we will move on, we have a public hearing. Scheduled for a proposed sewer rate increase. So I will.
Yeah, as, and I'm going to say that, I think, because. I do not believe that it was noticed properly, because if, in the posting, it did not detail that we're gonna be raising the rates. Thirty-nine percent over six years. And there's, the resolution wasn't attached, and the resolution is wrong. Because the changes still were not made on attachment A, in fact, my sewer rate will go down seventy-two dollars from seventy-six. I think we need to cancel it, I. We have no public here, I think, and so that means that. It wasn't really noticed, it wasn't there Monday morning, the public notice at the food stop, it was not there. I think we need to have a workshop. Where we can decide what we're gonna do, because this resolution has to be above other resolutions. We have an ordinance that may need to be amended, because we have an ordinance that supersedes the resolution, saying it's ten percent. So, we need to put a little more thought into this. Last month, Sharon says that there is thirty thousand, no, sixty thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars approximately. In arrears, and that was a month ago, eighty-eight customers are behind. I think that we need to, in fact. Trying to get them current, we need to take off rate fees, the interest or something, put them on payment plan. And try to increase our revenue, cause if we raise the rates. We could put some citizens in more. Danger of not being able to make the payments, so any rates we get is gonna be offset with more fee than not paying.
Okay. We covered like four different things there, so what, let's, first of all. You're, you're proposing that we do not do the public hearing and that we hold a workshop?
Yes.
Okay, um. Well, so Sharon noticed. The, the notice was done on time.
And, yes, the notice was done on time, the only thing that went into paper, yes.
Yeah.
And I copied it from another cities and other jurisdictions, their rate increase. Notice and. And use theirs, I use an example from another city. And I did find that the pu- the public hearing is not even a requirement. And we'll go there, but it's not even a requirement, but we decided to do, the city's council decided to do it. But it was noticed that Monday morning, when you told me that I needed to go and make one, I went right in, made it, when posted it. Monday morning. It was, the, um, agenda was posted Friday. Um. Sent out Friday, maybe Saturday, um. On the agendas. With the public hearing, and it was talked about two times in two separate meetings. But you, you know, if you copy and paste, that doesn't mean it's right. I didn't copy and paste by type. Oh, no, I mean, if you copy, I'm sorry, I didn't mean copy and paste, if you copy from another cities, doesn't make it right if you don't follow the O A R. And the O R S, which it says right. It doesn't need to even have a public hearing, you've never had a public hearing before. Yes, now. I'll go ahead and show you. And I'll show you. When? Um. Eleven, twenty, twenty? Okay, so that was the only time? No. Well, I got these.
Well, regardless, regardless, we're, we are gonna have a public hearing, that's just what we want.
What, that's what you wanted to do?
Yeah.
And it was posted that, like.
So it was, it was, it was posted, my only reason that I would not hold this public hearing. Is because I do the ordinance resolution issue, and I agree with you that we need to probably go a little bit deeper into the ordinance. And resolution problem, because if we need to repeal things, now's our time to do it. So.
I agree, I, I think that is a, a valid point, and I think we have to. We have to make sure that's correct.
Yes. So, um, if we're in agreement on that, I appreciate you for noticing everything, Sharon, I know it's kind of a pain in the butt to go through the world and we. And do that stuff, I would like to. We do need to talk about. We do need to talk about this resolution one more time.
Exact, exactly, and that's what I asked for in multiple emails.
Yeah.
Two weeks prior to the agenda even being, being sent out. Um, knowing whether or not what else needed to be done. And I do have a resolution from twenty-one dash tw- uh. Resolution twenty-one dash thirty-one, where it does go through and it talks about how it does look different. Than our, um, resolution that we created this time. Where it says, resolution rescinding section one of resolution twenty, twenty dash thirteen, adopted June eleventh, twenty twenty. And adopting new monthly sewer rates on July first, twenty twenty-one, and that's was signed in, um. On July was adopted by the city council tenth day of June, twenty twenty. And then they were also, where they. Um, have the sewer rates going into effect in twenty twenty-one. And there was not a sitting, there was not a public hearing.
Sharon, I just wanna tell you this real fast. The, the initial one that was done in twenty twenty. Was noticed in the paper, it was, our letters went out to everyone. It went up. For ten percent for five years. So every July, a new resolution was done with no hearing. Because the initial hearing addressed it and the resolution explained it, that it would be going up ten percent every year. So a new resolution was done every July, raising it that ten percent. And that's why there was only the one hearing on this. Question though, if that was the first resolution saying what the next five years or ten years was gonna be. Then what, what, where do the ordinances come in, this before then? There's, so. That's why we have to go through and have a workshop to, to figure there is an ordinance. That says that, um. And I just wish this would have been not up. We just found these ordinances that right there. Uh, we just found all these ordinances when he was looking for them. So we don't even have them, you know. Correct. I mean, so you are absolutely right, Sharon. We have resolutions every July that have no hearing. Because it was noticed. Five years ago that it would be going up for that. So we're gonna be raising for six years, we need to let the people know.
Possibly.
Well, yes, so that she's been possibly raising the rates. The, the bottom line with raising the rates is that we applied for a, a loan and got a grant. Based on the fact that we are raising the rates. And there's no going around. At least raising the rates for the next year or two. We have to pass a resolution that's gonna raise the rates. For twenty-six or twenty-seven, because that's, we'll get the grant and the loan pool.
Right, it was a requirement of the, uh, of the. Funds, the acceptance of the, of our application. The requirement was that we raised the rates.
And Sharon talked to Garrett today because we have the seven hundred thousand dollars raised. And then the remainder of the money is a loan.
Mm-hmm.
The seven hundred thousand dollar grant gets us through phase one. So we can decide still if we do not wanna do phase two and not use any of the loan money. So, we have a grant to finish phase one. And, uh, you know, you brought up the other loan opportunity. We, we could still do that, but we have to go through with this one to keep that grant. Cause that was a part of it, so. I'm, why don't we? Throw a workshop.
Did I make the recommendation? Yeah, you tabled the public hearing in the matter, pending university reporter coming on more.
Yes, please.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, we have to re-notice it, so we just cancel it and then.
Correct, the formal term would be to suspend the public hearing.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we need to do that because. We, we'll get this resolution ordinance thing sorted out, we'll get a notice and we'll start, start again, but the rates do need to go up, so. Uh.
And it has to be in November.
Yeah.
That was what we told them.
Told me is the, the.
The loan, we went to a hearing, we went, um, Business Oregon. And we went through, um, we went to a hearing.
Yeah. Well, I mean, we can always. Talk about it Monday and then like, we need to do it in the first week of December, I'm.
Yeah. It'll be. Business Oregon tends to be very amicable and easy to deal with.
And I.
Oh, good.
Push back on, hey, we have the city reporter coming in, we wanna make sure we're doing this right.
Yeah. All right. So we will suspend the. The public hearing, item number twenty-four. And, uh, wait for our new city reporter to handle it. All right, um. Item number twenty-five, discuss sewer billing late fees, please, um. Courtney, for you, just a little background on, uh, there was a late fee that was implemented in January of this year, that was nine percent.
Hmm.
Of the bill.
Okay.
But when it was put into our billing software, it somehow became your total amount owed. So people are getting charged nine percent on, if they have three months late. It was nine percent of that. Plus your late fees. So it ended up being like, we were charging like sixty dollars for some, you know, eighty dollars for some people's late fees per month. So is it true, so we suspended it. So we currently do not have a late fee.
Okay.
That, so we need to re-implement one. By resolution, most likely. Um, to make sure that.
Yeah, I think, no.
But the, the past city reporter just put that on. And it was not discussed with council.
I, I would recommend that we, uh, to the agenda for the upcoming work session.
Okay.
They'll give me an opportunity to review whether it was a resolution, if we're even. Yeah, I'm not familiar if we're just allowed to institute a late fee or.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And, and we have an ordinance that was found, that was amended and then. That amended was repealed and then we did a new one that. State and talks about the link when accounts and stuff like that. So that's what we need to go look at and see because ordinance is trumped. And I think that's what we're, we're, we're dealing with. On it, yeah. So we have a new, um, two ordinance to still look at. All right, so we'll get to the, uh, that. I put that on the agenda for the work session. And then I just went to, while we were looking, there are three. Applications for sewer that we need to be looked at. And some of them says of nine percent. One of them has, um, doesn't list it and the other.
I don't have their city website.
Yes. Like, oh, we have three different ones, and one of them, and one of them pulls up by Googling it. We couldn't find it, so Mike Googled in the search engine. And we came up one from seven, one of two thirteen. So, I mean, we have three different applications with three different bands on them. This kinda segues into, I've sent all of you counselors, our I T department. Reached out to me with the new sewer billing software that they offered and it was. Um, I think you guys saw one hit two dollars per account per. Month, or was it year? Month? Yeah, um. But the, the reason I think that we should consider this, look at how much we're spending on our current software and, um. Kinda just do a little bit more research is because Sharon was explaining to me and pulled it up and I got to see the actual sewer billing software. And I think it's very easy for new staff members to come into the office. And, um, people with closed accounts, new accounts. You kinda have to do a little bit of research to make sure that you're not just starting, uh, a new account for someone. Who hasn't paid sewer for three years or, um. There's, there's just a lot of room for error. And then we have the paper bills and it's kinda just a little primitive. So I think it's gonna be something maybe we should, you know, it's not something we have to do right away. But get a little bit more information about how, how much we're paying for our current software. And you might be able to kinda clean things up a little bit. And you can get some liquid accounts caught up, um.
Yeah, that would, that would, that would pay for plus.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
And, and, uh, and that's what, I reached out to Tony asking him. Yeah, yeah, I was asking if there's some other, better software. And so, we, um. Or actually, maybe somebody called and then I hooked him up with, um, Tony and we met, uh, on Zoom. And I reviewed the software and I just think that it's going to be a good, uh, that it has, um. Automatic bill pay and all of these other things that people, uh, that were, they, it stresses more like online bill pay. Instead of here, they have to call us, we, or they can go online and do it, but it's kinda, it's not, it is primitive. And they get charged two dollars and fifty cents. It's not gonna be like that. It'll, and we're supposed to encourage people to, uh, get, uh, use online billing. Um, and that would save on mail, mailing.
Yeah, I know auto, auto pay is just a lifesaver for bills.
Yeah.
Now, for making sure they're paid on time. I think that would be.
Yep.
And it, and I, I showed it to, maybe to see, cause I saw the seven hundred dollars it can cost a month.
Mm-hmm.
But they talked about adding, and you know, your Verizon and stuff, bills, they say. If we'll give you a discount if you do online, you know, statements. And if you don't, we're gonna charge you. So I mean, one or two dollars. But she says this is a fantastic program and we should have a workshop so that you can answer questions about postage and stuff.
And they said that they would be happy to do a, um, meeting, a Zoom meeting with, with us council.
Oh, that'd be great.
So.
I think we should schedule something.
Mm-hmm.
Because it, how long would it, I mean, to ask the questions about what, whatever the bottom line for us. Even down, and if it's feasible. And I, I would have questions about this. Do we not send out any bills then?
Well, we'd still send out some bills because people. Opt, yeah, if you want online, yeah, paperless or not. And, and then, yeah, we, they can do. They have all of those, uh, they have answers to all that. It was very, I mean, when I was, I mean, cause Tony kept like twisting my arm. Come on, Sharon, you gotta, um, attend this. So it's like, okay. So then it was really a good, good presentation and I see how. Right now, we pay two forty-seven for a month for, um, R B S. But they, um, and so. I, I think that, that he, I forward all of what their estimate and all that was, what they were gonna charge, the estimate charge.
Yes.
Okay.
How long was your, your Zoom meeting?
Oh, I think it's only about a half hour. They, they are trying to, um, they have lots, the people are very busy. But, um, they're actually developers, I believe, of the software. And so they were, they make it brief.
It's a heavy workshop, adding that into, can we do a separate break to see about getting it started and. That way our new city reporter can sit in on it and see what we're talking about.
Mm-hmm.
You, um, I can email Tony and ask him when they could come out and.
Oh, and they all, uh, yeah. They also send out automatic, um, notices. For pay, for late notices.
So it's not how.
Does that have to do it manually?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Now you have to, yeah.
I feel like that position would be simplified or almost eliminated if. If we had something streamlined like that, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Um, okay, I'll email Tony and see when he can get out to us and do the Zoom thing and. Um, we can. To try and get something started by the end of the year, because. Yeah, uh. Is there, well, we've kind of established that maybe like. The next. Two, three weeks, we can. I, I, I mean, I don't really wanna set like a date or time until the new, we can be there for that. Can you mind if I find out? Information and tell you that you know you guys will reach out to you, I'll wait your information. And then, um, so that up, okay.
Oh, yeah, within ninety days. We're gonna set, Terry, we'll set you up with the city email. And we have to do that within thirty days, I think.
Yeah.
Councilor. We just changed that.
Yeah, well, I mean, I could change my mind with email. All right, um, all right, board and committee reports. Airport, no one's assigned for the watershed. Okay, we had a meeting Tuesday, um, and. I'm still learning all the language they use, the abbreviations and that. As if I just sit here and it's just going everywhere. I'm talking, you, you would know, I'm sort of making notes on there. Uh, I'm not gonna ask, you know, because I don't wanna be stupid and I don't want to. But I will find this, um, well, LAMM partnership has been working with. In, um, the watershed for like two and a half, three years. They have done a grant project for them. And she did the slideshow and everything, but they gave me this card and it was, um. Benton, is he the guy that was sitting next to me, Benton? He works with Kelly Bazar. And they do stormwater grants. And he says, you are not even compliant, you're sitting with D U. And the T M L compliance, but we can get it that way for you. And I go, we don't have the money because you don't have money. He says it's grants. So I was gonna give you their card, so you can contact him. And I put a few notes on the back. So that. And I says, you write here that our stormwater is not even compliant. And I got that look and he says, of course you do, and D U cares, but they'll never do anything with you. Because, but he said, absolutely, we can do whatever you need to do. And I says, long as they don't cost us any money, I don't care. Is that for us?
Well, I'm not sure about that. I think the other person who really wanted to get in touch with the agenda slightly also is managing the phone things, I do believe, right? Here, in what side?
It would be good involving, yes.
But I would give her the card, she can check into it, you can figure out, get with them, is what we have to do, but they, um.
They have done a wonderful job, as mom would know, with the current projects that are in play right now. Um, and there are significant projects for the wetland restorations there on the lake. So they have done. Really good job. Obviously, your sewer plant, getting it off the creek, you know, has also been something that has been considerably positive. You know, for that whole storm drain situation as well. So there's a lot of things that come into play. Um, but they are wanting me to.
Yeah, see, it's, it's all for, I mean, I have no idea what they were talking about and stuff, but they are gonna do a tour. Because I'm getting the areas mixed up and Mike Mater said he would take me out and show me them and stuff. And I do know that the lake, they, they brought in a green olive grass. That, and we shook it. It was, it was dark green and there was all kinds of stuff in it. And Mike made it into that's our lake right now and stuff. So it's, it's fascinating. It's, it's really interesting, but it's. What?
We've, I've never seen it this good.
It's like they have, I don't know much of it.
I wish the state would be more, uh, I hope you guys take care of it. It feels like.
What does this mean?
Both the salmon, both the salmon are gonna come this year, yeah.
All right. Um. Water District Counselor Pointer isn't here, Ten Mile Lake Association.
Uh, Ten Mile Lake Association last met on November fifth. And I was unable to attend. Uh, Dean?
Oops.
Was there anything from the last T L A meeting that should be brought up here?
I wasn't at the last one. I was at a town.
Okay.
It was just, um.
I wasn't there even.
Yeah, no, I was at a town.
All right.
And the next meeting is, uh, December third at five thirty at the Lakeside Bar.
Mm-hmm. Great. Uh, Fire District Counselor Pointer isn't here. Uh, Lakeside Business Owners Counselor Hand isn't here. And I know they haven't met. This might be a good time. For our newest counselor.
Go to the chair.
Yeah. Uh.
It does.
What I would think, um, since the L B O isn't really hosting any meetings right now. I would really like to have someone from council attending planning commission meetings. Or have someone from planning commission report to us. Our meetings, so we're kind of.
Well, there's a post to be here, they're, they're on the list.
Um, but if you would like that to be your committee reporter, I can do that, yeah, planning commission meetings, that'd be great. And then you kind of report to us and what they're doing.
No, it's fine, it's my understanding that. Statutorily by the state, the city council would be an appeal. For a planning commission, so it would not actually be recommended for a city counselor to attend any planning commission.
Right.
Yeah.
Your counselor and your, you attended planning commission when the hearing takes place. If the appeal that are coming for the council, you have to be using itself.
Yeah, okay, well, we need to just reply, I was trying to finish the meeting.
They're supposed to report to the council on periodic basis.
So.
It's on here, she, they know.
Yes.
Um, the Sarah, our. Care coach, Coates is usually, um, she's made aware.
Okay.
And they're supposed to, I guess we, I can do a report, we didn't do, we had a meeting of. About a fifteen minute meeting and they wanted me to contact D L C D, so I did and D L C D will be um.
Fifteen minute meeting?
Uh, yeah, really seriously, wasn't about fifteen minutes, or you can have Shaw, Shawlee, you know.
She'll be a third or fourth.
Yeah.
If you want to.
Okay, and so the, for the, and what they wanted me to do and I did was I immediately. Emailed Wei with D L C D and she is, we're gonna meet on and discuss how to add. Vacation rentals to the M C one fiber. And the residential some. She's gonna walk me through it unless the news recorder knows how to do it and then she can do it.
The, one of the things with that that we need to seriously address is H D three one one five. Also three one one five, the.
Thirty one three.
Camping ordinance, that needs to be like.
Oh, she knows how to do that one.
Yeah, so just side note for you, um. And I can fill you in on our backside with that, but you heard our conversation earlier about the FEMA thing, so. If you could report back to them with that, if, yeah, okay, awesome. Uh, code enforcement, um. Counselor Armstrong, Counselor Harden and I and um, Michael. Have been working to get all of the um. Complaints organized, filed, um, I was gone last week, so I would miss some of it, but. Starting kind of from square one, getting all the complaints filed, we're gonna start working through one case, especially with our new city recorder. About our code enforcement process, make sure she knows how to do it and staff knows how to do it. Hopefully, we are going to start marching through the staff of code enforcement, so. Um, there's no, been no committee meetings because there's no code enforcement committee, but um, there's progress on that portion. So, um, senior board.
Um, they didn't have a meeting on Veterans Day because it was Veterans Day. But they had their breakfast, Veterans Breakfast, we had twenty seven veterans and eighty people show up, so it was a good thing. Yeah, and um, uh, Dave taught me how to make batters and flip. And then he stood there and he says, you know, you gotta clean the grill, that's part of the job, and I looked at him and goes, or I'll come back. So he came back. You want me to give a reminder of the fight, pardon me?
Yeah, if you'd like to, okay.
Um, we had uh, a total of about forty seven calls. Uh, last month and sixteen that were in Melissa Bridge. Uh, Jerry Ewing uh, is uh, spearheading the um, information of about. Redging the channel, so that he can get those through, depending on when you want as well. So he's gonna be leading with uh, Mike Mater and um. Then I can't remember the deputy, but the deputy says if we can get uh, some, some good bids, he might be able to find a funding.
Okay.
Give you that, so it's probably about a two year process, so we are, you know, we're working on.
Great. Our new city reporter asked us that too about the um. The interview about the fire, the fire department and the new rail line or the shipping container port. They all have an effect lakeside, so that's why she said we have forty seven calls, did you say how many were north of the track?
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
Normally, normally it's over fifty percent. And so we are, uh, I mean, you're, we're trying to save money to uh, build a, another, on the other side. So. We're working on.
Great, thank you. Library Board, Counselor Harden is here. Announcements. I don't really have any announcements per se, I have comments, but I'll wait, you have any announcements?
Did you wanna know about these things? The question, these um. The letter from Business Oregon. That um, was in the.
Oh, yes, our audit.
Yeah, I, I spoke to Michael Fettler and he said that we're, um, he was supposed to send me something. He's gonna be gone for two weeks, but anyway, what he said was that we probably don't have to do any of this.
Okay.
Because we didn't spend enough money. If we spent over seven hundred fifty thousand dollars in this one particular year, I think it was twenty twenty three. Then we'd have to do the fun calls, um, I found out the S E F A. And um, I'm saying it like that is because the auditor wanted to know, had said we have to fill out this form, this S. This S F A or F E F A. And he says, we don't need to, so that's a good thing. And um, and not to worry, there's nothing that we need to do. And so that was a good thing and then we got the letter from the Forest Service telling us to please not let the, to please keep. Given our, the um. Doing what, oh, here, what it says.
It really says keep doing what we've been doing.
Yeah, yeah.
Because the government shut down.
Yes, and so still continue providing the services to them. And so that's what they said to do and then the tax bills are going out, out this. Um.
From the county.
Yeah, from the county.
Just a silent reminder, we do not have city taxes.
Yeah, we don't have city taxes, that's another issue that we'll hopefully address.
Um, okay, Mayor and Councilwoman, Councilman Miller.
Well, welcome, Courtney. Excited that you're here and look forward to getting to know you and work with you.
He's our council president as well. Thank you for the opportunity to serve, appreciate it.
Oh, yes, I'm welcome.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, yeah, I wanna welcome our new city recorder, I'm super excited to start. Getting things organized and get things moving along, it'll be a, you know, slow process, but we'll get there, you know, and welcome to our new counselor. Super exciting, um, I did want to. Um, just point out and thank the volunteers for the Hauser Fire Department fundraiser. They, I heard there was over eight hundred people that turned out for that, which was really awesome and it was all just volunteers making that happen. So I just wanna give a shout out to them because it's amazing what our community can do and when people fall in tough times.
I heard they borrowed them about fifty thousand.
Really?
Oh, wow.
That's fantastic.
Wow, that's what I heard.
Okay, that's great. Um. We got a couple, we have a workshop coming up, so um, please attend that, other than that. I don't even have anything else, so.
No, you, thank the new councilor and you, and I'm, unlike the mayor. Says it's gonna take a long time, I have total faith you're gonna be up and running and I posted the grant. That's some pressure, I know. And so I, I am so excited to have somebody with, um, to record with municipal experience.
Councilor?
And I'd like to thank um, the three people that volunteered to serve on council.
Yes.
It's, it's an important, it's a important volunteer service and it's great that there's people who wanna do it.
Yeah, thank you.
They'll appreciate that.
Yeah. Great, well, if that's it, I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting at seven fifty nine.